Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we'd like to welcome to everyone to our council meeting tonight. Will you call the roll, please?
Bachman?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here. Is there a motion to appoint?
I'll move to make Lindsey acting clerk of council tonight.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to make Mr. Valle our clerk for this evening by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passed unanimously. And will you read the clerk's report, please?
Work session minutes of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that was unanimous.
Council meeting minutes of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that was unanimous also. And it looks like we have one item under old business. Will you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number zero dash, or O dash zero two dash two three dash zero two. An ordinance approving amendment of section one twenty-one point zero one, city manager of chapter one twenty-one of the Clayton codified ordinances.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that passed unanimously. And it looks like we have some items under new business. We have two ordinances. We read the first, please.
Ordinance number O dash zero two dash two three dash zero four. An ordinance approving construction of street lighting improvements in and to adopt assessments for annual lighting charges upon lots located within Hunter's Path, section one in the city of Clayton, Ohio.
Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So if you remember, two meetings ago, we, uh, we passed the, uh, resolution necessity for the street lighting district at Hunter's Path Phase One. This is the next step of that process. It's actually creating the street lighting district. So this is, um, just approving the actual creation of the street lighting district. It also gives the city the authorization to assess property owners for the operation of the streetlights.
Will they use the aggregation that we just put in, Jack?
Um, well, that's totally up to them as.
You mean they're automatically included in it as we all are?
In the city of Clayton, as yet.
When will they actually start putting up the lights?
Well, that has to do with when, when they're able to get the material in, get it scheduled and all that type of stuff. They haven't given us a timeframe.
Okay.
I mean, I've seen streetlights take six months. Sometimes I've seen them go up in two months. It just, it honestly is a material, um, being able to successfully get those, the material in, being able to successfully schedule it. I don't know what their workforce is right now. Um, so I really don't have a good idea.
Okay.
Didn't you say they were going to be selling lots here shortly?
They are.
In the, uh, it used to be Brookfield Star. What is it now, sir?
Register Herald.
The Register Herald?
Yes, so at Hunter's Path, I actually spoke with the developer this week. Um, what they're waiting for right now is for the utility companies to get the lots energized. Um, so AES and Center Point have to get out there and, and hook all, actually get energy out to the site. That's scheduled to happen in March. Um, originally, the developer, the builder was going to build a couple spec houses using generators, but since they're at March right now, they're just going to go ahead and wait for AES and Center Point to get the utilities hooked up, and then they're going to start moving forward. Um, and they're going to start rolling out, selling the lots pretty quickly here.
Do you, do you know if they've sold any lots?
I don't know that off the top of my head, no.
And this, I mean, I, I'm supportive of this. I just thought of this and I was gonna ask, um, are they going to do underground electric like what's in your plat-?
Yes.
Oh, okay, cool.
Yep.
I'll move for approval.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Um, Mr. Bachman abstain, has to abstain on this, so we have a roll call.
Bachman?
Abstain.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes. So let the record show that is unanimous with one abstention. Thank you. And will you read the next ordinance, please?
Ordinance number O dash zero two dash two three dash zero five. An ordinance approving amendments to the city's personnel practices manual at Article Three, Section K, probation and Article Six, adding subsection Q, thereto military leave of absence policy.
Elaine, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, you have before you, um, two amendments to the personnel manual. One that, uh, changes the probation, the current probation policy, uh, which permits the city manager to approve a probationary period less than twelve months if, um, it's deemed fit, as well as an addition of a military leave, which dictates the eligibility, procedure, benefits and reinstatement of, uh, military leave, and it does abide by the laws under U.S.A.R.A.
What has the probation, uh, policy been up until this?
Um, it's been, it's basically been that it's twelve months. It's always been twelve months unless, um, there's been a part-time service.
A lot of people use six months. That's why I was wondering. Twelve months seemed a long time.
I know, yes. Yep, but, uh, yes, it has been for quite some time, the twelve months.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it looks like we have two resolutions. Will you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution number R dash zero three dash twenty-three dash twenty-six. A resolution to authorize and approve certain proposed revisions to the fire department fee schedule.
Chief Garver?
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, coming before you tonight, um, several years ago, uh, we approved a fee schedule for the fire department, go out and do, uh, all the different testing and things that we do. Uh, back then, our building department was Montgomery County. Uh, we received no monies from Montgomery County when we did this, so we wanted to put our own fees involved in that when it was appropriate. Uh, now that we switched and have our own building department, uh, we get percentage of those fees that we pay to them, so I don't think it's right on our side to double fee anybody, uh, except for when it's, again, appropriate when the, the building department's not involved. So we eliminated most of our fees, except for the certain ones, like I said, where like the testing of the water mains and things like that, our building department is not involved in that section. Uh, also, if we're doing re-inspections several times where they're not coming in compliance, they're using us to test their system versus them testing their system right away. We kept that in there. Also fireworks, if you do fireworks anywhere in the city, we want to, we want to know that you're doing that, and there's a fee for that because we got to be on site. Uh, so really, we just cut them down to the ones that the building department's not involved in. Uh, as you can see, the fees are not very large. It's not, we make a lot of money off of it. Most of it's also just to force people to let us know what they're doing, especially on the fireworks side of it, and the tents, that sort of stuff. So we're actually decreasing the amount of permit fees that we have just to, to be fair.
Well, that's refreshing. You, you don't hear that very often. Any questions for chief on that? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, chief. Will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution number R dash zero three dash two three dash two seven. A resolution establishing rates and fees at Meadowbrook at Clayton for the year twenty twenty-three.
Hello again. Um, so you have before you the, uh, recommended rates for both the golf course and the banquet facility. Uh, the golf course rates were last amended in twenty nineteen, and because of the cost of everything going up, um, we have, are suggesting a slight increase in the pass rates as well as the greens fees. Um, you can see before you, most of the increase, uh, is, um, not, uh, applied to residents. There's just the one which is the resident, uh, rate before one P.M. on Saturday and Sunday, which is the prime time, and that's increased by a dollar. Um, the rest of the rates are typically, um, increasing greens fees rates by two dollars. Um, also, the change in the banquet rates are before you. Uh, these were changed in twenty twenty-two, and that was when the city took over operations, and there is no longer, um, an onsite caterer as we permitted outside catering. Uh, so we did review, um, we made upgrades to the facility as well as the A.V. equipment, which was a, uh, big upgrade, which we very much wanted to do, as well as, uh, usage rates, uh, rates of other similarly situated facilities, market trends. Um, so we are recommending, uh, slight increases anywhere from fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars depending on day of the week, time. Uh, we did, a couple of years ago, we combined, we made Friday and Sunday a weekday rate. So in the proposed rates, we did break out a Friday and Sunday rate, and then there's a Saturday rate as well as a Monday through Thursday rate.
Did we change these rates since nineteen also?
Yeah, no, uh, yes, we changed these last year. Yes.
Well, I mean, the only thing is, since nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, we didn't have a lot of rentals because of the pandemic.
That is correct.
We're not pricing ourselves out of the market at this point in time.
No, we are not.
Because we don't know what the traffic will bear because we haven't, nobody got married or had parties back in those days.
Correct, but it seems like, uh, people are making up for that right now, which is a good thing. That's a great thing. But I do not believe, when looking at, um, other area facilities and things, we are not pricing, I do not believe we are pricing ourselves out.
I reviewed this today also. Um, just wanted to check and see what some other comps were, and it's still much less than, um, really a lot of, one of our former caterers, um, that we used to have there uses entities in the city of Dayton that are sometimes three times more than any of our rates, so it is much less.
I, I think, I think it's important that we stay low, as low as possible, or lower than our competitors. I think that's, I mean, I'd love to see that, you know, so, also.
And we're still making upgrades and things, and you know, I mean, as that happens, we'll certainly, uh, relook at it, but we did also take into, uh, consideration all the costs associated with it and those increases, and we feel that this would, um, this is a nice balance.
I just have one other question.
Yes.
Under the rental fil-, facility rental information, item number five says major holidays.
Yep.
I, I think everybody knows that those are major holidays. I just wonder why they're underneath there.
Um. So, well, um, if you go and then it says, um, on the rate sheet, it's like Saturdays and major holidays. So we just name a major holidays and then want to be clear what, to, uh, people, what those holidays are. So if somebody wants to have a party on New Year's Eve, even if it's on a Monday, they know they're going to pay the Saturday rate. Well, if they want to have it at Meadowbrook. Yes. Just because that, with the major holidays, we are paying staff a higher rate, so. Yes, it is. Yes, so we have that on there as well.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a couple items for you this evening. Uh, first, in city news and events, the Easter egg hunt will take place on Saturday, April first, twenty twenty-three, at nine thirty A.M. at Meadowbrook at Clayton, and be prompt because it only lasts a few minutes. Um, our next senior lunch and learn is Wednesday, March fifteenth, at twelve P.M. at Meadowbrook at Clayton. Um, the Village of North Clayton Planning Commission item, um, was pulled from this month's planning commission meeting and hopefully will be, um, going in April, or be, be before council in April. Um, let's see, the electrical aggregation, uh, the public hearing for the plan of governance will be on Thursday, March sixteenth, here in this room, at twelve P.M., and then another one at six P.M. prior to our council meeting. Uh, representatives from Palmer Energy will be here to help answer any questions that residents might have. Uh, the Northmont Area Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting will be taking place on March twenty-third from eleven, uh, to two P.M. at Meadowbrook at Clayton, and if you're interested in, in attending, just let me know by Tuesday, March fourteenth, and I can, uh, RSVP for the group. Um, if you will recall, Enterprise Fleet Management was here at our last meeting. Um, if there are no questions from council, I will have legislation at the next meeting to enter into that agreement so we can give that a try to see if it can save the city some money. Um, and then, just as a note, the fire collaborative stats for twenty twenty-two and for the first part here of twenty twenty-three are attached, so if you have any questions, today's a great day to ask them since Chief Garver is here. And that's all I have for you this evening.
I, I've had a lot of questions about this electrical aggregation. Do you think this room is going to be ho-, big enough to hold those crowds? Because I think you will have a crowd, because a lot, and, and I couldn't answer all their questions. I'll be first to admit that, so they said they would be attending one or the other of them.
I, I think we'll be okay since they're split. We do.
Um, the only thing I would maybe ask is, you know, chief, I, I can thank you and say these response times are amazing. If we could maybe put that on social media just to share for the community to see how the collaborative is working, I think it would be great.
We can do that.
I would love to share it. Um, I think the community has always been very supportive of police and fire, and, um, them seeing just these facts that are listed for us would be very appreciated by them.
We can do that.
And then, um, I just was gonna say, I, I will be going to the chamber thing, so if you want to take my reservation, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else for the city manager?
About the Easter egg hunt? Have we checked on our neighbor and communities to see if it's the same day?
It is. I know that Unions is the same day. No, Union is at ten thirty. I'm not sure when Inglewood is doing theirs. I know that Salem Church of God and the Y.M.C.A. have partnered up, and they're doing one on the same day, but I don't think it's at the same time.
Can I ask a question about the fleet?
Sure.
I'm assuming you, um, due diligence and on the company and, okay. No, no problems or issues with them?
No, I have the, uh, agreement, and actually, I got a copy of Fairborn's agreement too, so, um, I'm going to phrase that. Is there some minor revisions I'd like to make to the agreement to make it particular to a political subdivision, but other than that, no.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, good. So we, the next item is our visitors' comments. We have two visitors in here. Mr. Earl, anything?
Earl, I was there, we were there for a long time, that dance party, and I never saw you get off that chair once. We knew there had to be a reason.
Mr. Nonary, anything for us? We're glad you came. Okay, so we will move on to our council. Mr. Lieberman, anything?
I just, uh, wanted to congratulate you on a great dance party. That really was very nice. Uh, I was there. I did not dance because I have bad feet too, but, um, as does Kenny, as does Tim, but we were there, and it, and it really was good. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you for the dance party again. It was a huge success. I know we're looking at Friday possibly in the future, just because of the response on the weekend seems to be a better timeframe. So, thank you. Thank you, Jack. Thank you. Dad.
Greg?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Gorman?
I don't have anything to say, neither.
Just also wanted to thank Earl for that event, and then I know Jack and staff is going to be working on the Easter egg hunt. As I've always stated, the kids and community look forward to that, so we'll be pushing that out once that's shared on social media too. And Ron, um, congratulations, I guess, on your merge with Register Herald. I've known Eddie for a few years, so, um, it sounds like it'll be a good team.
Brendan?
Uh, nothing to add tonight.
And I have really nothing else to add, um, either. I just want to say thanks again to all of our staff and, and all of our council and all of our residents for making this a great place to live and work, and we're, we're moving forward at a nice, even steady pace, and, um, I think everyone's comfortable with that. Just wanted to say good job to everyone, so.
Mayor, we do have the need for a short executive session to consider the purchase of property.
Okay, so we are going to have a short executive session to consider the purchase of property?
In the city manager's letter, it said brief. It didn't say short. It.
Okay, so is there a motion to enter into executive session? Motion to enter into executive session by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, roll call? Roll call on that, please.
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes. So at this time, we'd like to ask our visitors and our guests to exit. You can come back. Yeah, right out there.
This way you have to walk and we don't run. This way you have to walk and we don't, Ron. This way you have to walk and we don't, Ron.
Okay, we're back in regular session?
I move for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn the meeting by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.